That's a different one, but if I have to survive with it when I can.
No, he's, he's got some animation that you have to like use through a web portal and it's just, it's not, it's not happening now.
It's the Boys and Girls Club?
It's like here, it's loading, it's on a Dropbox and it's, it's not downloading and um, I'm taking a while.
Yeah. We can use the same one if you have it, yeah.
I mean, that might still be here, but.
Okay.
This is it?
Uh, I can use that one if I had to.
Okay.
It's not, it's not the same animated one I wanted, but I can live with that one.
Okay.
You can't get the other one, okay.
Alright.
Okay, alright, hey, thanks.
Good evening and welcome to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing for ZBA November 8th, 2021. This meeting will occur in person, but we can also join remotely either by smartphone tablet via Zoom.
Recording in progress.
Call-in LTC. All documents are available on the Lowell Zoning Board website. If you wish to speak tonight on behalf of a petition, please come to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. If you have a phone, please turn it off or place it on vibrate. Please take calls in the corridor and have open conversations in the corridor out of respect for the public decorum. Opening up the meeting under continued business, ZBA 2021-33, special permit and variance, John Feneris, 157 Billerica Street. Article 12 and section 5.1. John Feneris has applied to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit and variance approval to add two additional residential units to the existing single-family home. The property is located in suburban multifamily and SNF. It requires special permit approval under Article 12 and the use variance approval for section 5.1 for relief from the front yard setback requirement and any other relief required on those zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
We got some Zoom or some calls coming in, so uh, hear some voices, so we'll uh, be patient as we can with modern technology. Good evening.
Sounds like a plan. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Corner Stone Land Associates, representing the applicant this evening, Chloee LLC, care of John Feneris. We're before you for a request of a special permit associated with the project at 157 Billerica Street, as well as a front yard variance request to meet the existing non-conforming structure along the front of the parcel. The proposed project consists of the addition of a single townhouse unit added to the south, southern side of the existing single-family structure with an additional detached unit in the rear yard. I'm not sure if the board may recall, but this project was before you folks in 2019 and the board provided um, an approval at that time, ZBA number 2019-33. And at the time, this project had four total units and required a side yard and a front yard. We're before you this evening because as that project began to progress to get to the point where they could begin construction, the applicant had realized that there was some back and forth between National Grid and the particular property owner. The property is encumbered by a 150-foot wide National Grid easement with power and electric lines running through. As a result of defining where that easement was and fully agreeing with National Grid to its location, we've downsized the project to now just three units, one attached and the one detached in the rear. All of the proposed parking will be situated in the rear of the existing structure as to not be visibly intrusive along Billerica Street. We did have an opportunity to review the memorandum provided by the planning department. I do see in the memorandum that the DPD believes that this particular project falls under the category of one, two, or three family dwellings as opposed to other, other residential uses. I don't believe we have a problem with that, but as the DPD pointed out, that would require to have us ask for an additional variance for number of units per dwelling, per lot area, I apologize. So they did provide a wonderful table inside their review letter identifying that as a three-family dwelling under the use table, it requires a 10,000 square foot per unit for a lot area to a dwelling unit and we would be devoid on that by 1,413 square feet per unit. And as I stated previously, the front yard setback, that existing structure is 19.4 and the requirement is 25, so we'd be looking for 5.6-foot variance for that particular front yard setback. We did also note that DVD outlined that in section 5.3.1 that all residentially zoned lots with more than 40 feet of frontage must maintain 50% of their front yard areas landscape open space. We don't have a problem with that. We meet that stipulation currently and we do not intend to put any parking or any other, you know, porches or anything extending into that front yard area. In regards to the remainder, we will be filing with conservation for notice of intent. The property does fall within 100 feet of a bordering vegetated wetland. As well, it does have some flood plain on the parcel. So we believe that this project, albeit it's a special permit for the three units in this zone, meets the requirements of obtaining a special permit as we don't feel that this property is derogating from the zoning requirements. We feel as though that there's a mix of uses within this neighborhood, single-family, two-family, as well as some three-families. And additionally, we feel as though that the encumbrance of the National Grid electric easement on the property, although it has much larger land area, the building envelope area for this particular project is limited due to that National Grid easement that's on the property. And we feel for those reasons that we're hoping this board will uh, move forward with approval on this application this evening. I'd be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. It's time to like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? 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 That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Van?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Lanier, thank you for um, all your accommodations to the comments, to the DPD and to the city. You know, I think, I think the um, the, the special permit and, and the relief you're seeking is, it's very applicable to this area and I think it only adds value having more homes in the city, so I have no issues with this and I wish you the best of luck, Mr. Lanier. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Uh, thank you through, Mr. Chairman. I know we previously approved this a couple of years ago and I commend the applicant for going back and kind of scaling it down a little bit. It was a little, you know, with putting the four units on there. We'd have granted with that and it, it was, you know, it was agreeable at that point, but, and I understand that that's probably because of necessity, because of the easement with um, with the National Grid, but. Just a couple of things though, I know, Mr. Lanier, the prior, I remember the prior application where the variances were granted with the site plan, there were two trees in front of the, that were located in front of the property. I don't see those on, located on the new site plan.
In front of the house? They were proposed?
There was, there was a plan, the prior plan was approved with two, with two trees to be set up in front of the, in front of the uh.
We have no problem providing those trees, that would be fine.
Okay, I think that was, that was, if I recall, I think that was one of the condition, not a condition, but I remember that being a thing that um, if I recall from, it was going several years back now and 2020 is but a blur.
Yeah.
So.
For all of us, yeah.
It just goes by so fast that it's like, but that, that's one thing I would like to see implemented is those two tree, those trees being put back on the site plan. The other one, I don't, I didn't notice, I don't see any elevations being provided of the proposed townhouses and I recall, I see that from the comments also.
It was, it was definitely listed in the comments, but in the application package, we did provide the architectural renderings in the very rear of the package.
Okay.
Um, there was a rendering showing the front building with the unit attached to it. They were done by Silverwatch and then another one showing the unit in the rear. I believe the gentleman from Silverwatch had passed away, so these are the existing plans that were provided at the last time. So they would have to be modified slightly, but I was waiting to hear from the board whether we had to go to that next level or not.
Okay, so that, so you're saying that the prior renderings of the elevations are pretty much similar? Similar to the previous grant, but for, we're taking off one unit in the back?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That is correct.
In light of the situation, I mean, I would condition it upon, you know, providing new elevations for DPD approval to be provided in order to, you know, as a condition of, of granting relief on this, so. And that with, along with the trees. Other than that, again, I, I think that this is, we did approve this previously. I think it uh, it, it will work, it's something that we could, you know, provide more adequate housing into that area and a lot of you are in agreement with those conditions, I'll, I would favor this, so I wish you the best of luck.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. McCauley.
Thank you, Sean Dennis.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments too, but where this is scaled back from what we had previously approved, this does make a lot of sense. Um, the application seems a little sloppy for what we're doing today, so I'm a little surprised that we don't have, I'm looking at the site plan. So the site plan that was submitted that we're reviewing today shows the original, the existing house and the two proposed townhouses. But we don't see access to anything as far as walkways, decks, stairs. Is there a reason for that?
No, there isn't, sir. I didn't put them on there, Mr. McCarthy, so that would have to be something I would have to add if that's what you'd like to see, absolutely.
Well, it does, you know, it does take away from green space, it does take away from landscape area. It um, shows intent as how we're accessing these units. Is the proposed townhouse, since we don't have the rendering or elevations to look at, is the proposed townhouse accessed um, at the finished floor elevation of 109? And then we have grades that are nearby at a 105, so it's roughly four feet above existing grade, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So there'd be stairs?
That is correct.
Yeah, so we don't know how you're, and there must be a stair, maybe a deck in the back kind of thing?
No proposed deck.
No proposed deck, okay, but at least there's two means of egress, so there's a stair on.
Definitely an entrance in the rear as well, yes, sir.
Right.
And, and I can provide those for you, Mr. McCarthy, that's fine.
Well, I, I think that in, in view of a complete application, it'd be nice to um, see that on future applications for sure. I think that conditioning that would be something I could go along with tonight unless my fellow board members want to continue it, but I think maybe having a condition that the site plans be revised to show um, all access stairs and walkways.
No problem.
And then of course, the other condition about the trees and landscape area. And then um, if we could attach the previously submitted elevations and renderings.
Right, and, and they are in the package.
So.
I'm not sure.
Peter, is that true? The application that I have in front of us doesn't have that, that I can see.
In the very last page? The last five pages, I believe.
So online, we have the application folder, right?
So I don't know if maybe something was mixed up. I know the project has been continued, but I, I didn't have elevations when I did the comment memo, so.
It wasn't.
Just send them over.
They were, what I did was provided just the snippets of the previous elevations. If I could bring these to you, Mr. McCarthy, if that's all right?
Okay, so are we proposing garages?
We are not.
We're not, okay.
So that's what I'm saying, we'd have to have updated plans, but this is what the applicant had provided me. And this also shows the number of bedrooms so that we could address that parking, which is where we came up with the six spaces for parking.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming the comments that we have dated September 21, 2021, you've received, is that correct?
I do have them, yes, sir.
And did you have them in sufficient amount of time to address the elevations that are missing?
I, I did provide the information to my client and I have as of yet received any of those additional renderings. I know he's working with a new architect, as I had stated. This particular gentleman sadly had passed away during the COVID time, I believe. And I believe he's working with a new architect.
Okay. We do have a maximum height here of 40 feet, three stories.
Yeah, we're well under that.
We don't have a document that states that though, so you're, you're saying that doesn't really give me any assurance that that's what we're actually getting for the application.
Well, i- in the proposed zoning chart, it provides an elevation height of 35 feet for the proposed dwelling. But yes, I understand your information, if, if that's something you can.
You understand, I, I think that it makes a lot of sense, we have a less, less burdensome development on the same lot that we approved.
Yes, sir.
So it makes sense to go forward with conditions, but.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't like this untidiness, if you will, in the application.
I, I understand, Mr. McCarthy, my apologies.
Well, going forward, I'd like to see more attention to the comments being addressed in the future if you can. Thank you, no further comments.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Lanier.
Mr. Brier, how are you, sir?
I'm well, thank you. If you refresh my memory, the, the, the original plan had four units, correct?
Uh, that is correct. It was the one additional unit to the south, onto the existing dwelling unit, and then a duplex in the rear and that's been shaved down to just the one single unit.
Yeah, so that concession was huge.
Yes.
Yeah, very favorable to the neighborhood. I'll vote in favor of this petition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Lanier.
Mr. Prokop, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, thank you, sir.
Excellent.
I agree with the, with my fellow board members. The project looks good. I wasn't here in 2019, so you know. But um, I would like to see, as, as Member McCarthy said, an updated site plan.
Absolutely.
So that I can, you know, get the full grasp of it, so. But other than that, I think the, the project would fit the neighborhood and I would vote in favor of it as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge. Any other comments, board? So sir, you, you've heard the comments, I mean, honestly, you um, it was an incident beyond your control unfortunately and our condolences.
Thank you.
To the family and to your team.
Appreciate it.
That, that puts us in a place to get these, these things tidied up and wrapped up as part of the permanent record for the application. We have a couple of conditions and you're agreeable to those.
Absolutely.
If there's any other comments or concerns by the board, then you'll address that moving forward. We appreciate your professionalism as always and they have a motion.
Yeah, just want to make sure I get the conditions correct here, Mr. Lanier, so we have, first one's applicant to provide updated site plan including trees and landscaping and front yard is previously approved by prior variance granted and to provide all access stairs and walkways. And number two is the applicant to provide floor plans and elevations for DPD approval.
That is correct, Mr. Lanier.
I think you had that for the trees in the front?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So with that, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-33 for 157 Billerica Street. So we have special permit and variance, right? So we have two votes?
Two votes, correct.
Okay. Special permit approval under Article 12 to add two additional residential units to existing single-family residential building with the previously mentioned conditions.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, by the vice chair. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve the special permit with conditions.
Vice Chair Peck?
Uh, approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve special permit with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve special permit with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approve the conditions.
Member Prokop?
Approve with conditions.
So your special permit hasn't been approved. That being said, seek a motion for a variance.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-33 for 157 Billerica Street for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum front yard setback and minimum lot area per dwelling unit to add two resident, two additional residential units to existing single-family residential building with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the vice chair, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve variance with conditions.
Vice Chairman Peck?
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approve variance with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approve variance with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approve the conditions.
Member Prokop?
Approve with variance conditions.
So you've been unanimously approved for both your special permit and variance. We wish you the best of luck and we thank you for the reduction.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Pleased to see you again, take care. Moving forward under continued business, we have ZBA 2021-34 for a variance. Julio Cortez at 242 Lakeview Avenue, section 5.1, section 5.3. We're in a communication, seeking a continuance to December 13, 2021. Is the petitioner here, Zoom or phone? None of the above? That being said, I'd like to move to a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-34 for 242 Lakeview Avenue to continue the public hearing of this matter to December 13, 2021.
May I have a second?
Second motion?
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve continuance, December 13, 2021.
Vice Chair Peck?
Uh, approve the continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to December 13, 2021.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to December 13, 2021.
Member Brier?
Approve continuance.
Member Prokop?
Approve continuance, December 13, 2021.
Thank you. Moving forward under continued business, ZBA 2021-28, a special permit, New England Masonry and Landscaping at 282 Lincoln Street. Article 12, New England Masonry and Landscaping has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit approval to establish a loom screening operation that will bring in outside loom to be processed on-site. At 282 Lincoln Street, the property is located in a light industrial, L.I. zoning district and requires a special permit for Article 12 for use and for any other relief required on those Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Yes, thank you and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP.
Good evening.
32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner, the applicant, New England Masonry and Design and Landscaping. With us tonight are Jessica, Jessica and Sebastian De Silva, the principals of New England Masonry and Landscaping. We also have Andrew Pojasik of Dana F. Perkins, he engineered for the project, and Jim McClatchy, a representative of the Scannell family who was the landlord and who has owned this land for well over 100 years. Uh, as you all know, we were first before this board back on September 13th seeking a special permit pursuant to Article 12 in order to establish and operate a loom screening business and the storage materials. This property is located off of Tanis Street. It's located within the light industry and general industry zones. Uh, the special permit is required for, for whether it's light industry or, or heavy industry. It doesn't make any difference, there's no distinction between the two zones, so whether we're, we're in the light industry or the general industry, we require a special permit for this particular operation. Uh, there was some confusion with that with regard to the last hearing, so I just wanted to clear that up. There was also a lot of confusion at that initial hearing regarding the exact location of this property, of this particular site in this operation. The confusion centered around a nearby landowner who had proposed a similar operation to this operation, but closer to the residential neighborhood. Since that last meeting, we've had a site visit, uh, which was attended by Member Brier and four or five neighbors. Based on what transpired at that site hearing, site visit, the applicant is proposing to move the intended work area uh, a good distance away from the residential area. Uh, we've provided the board with a revised overlay site plan which clearly shows the overlay of the entire 16-acre parcel with the boundaries, as well as a clearly defined zoning districts within the parcel. We've also provided a site plan that shows the new location of both the whole screening area and the storage area. The concerns that we heard from the board members and the neighbors were related to noise and dust control associated with this application. We feel that we've adequately, adequately addressed the sound concerns by relocating the screening and storage areas as far away from the residential neighborhood as we, as possible considering the available space at the site. So right now, we are, the, the loom pile will be roughly 450 feet from the nearest residential structure. The initial application, it was only 150 feet from the nearest residence. Uh, so that's a significant difference. It's also, it also should be noted that the, the area is buffeted by a commercial condominium complex on Maple Street. We feel that moving the, the operation deeper into the property, into the center of the property will allow us to keep our decibel levels within the, the noise requirements or the noise ordinance of the city as it's measured to the lot line. With regard to the dust mitigation, the applicant has researched the EPA standards, the dust control and is confident that his plan to cede the loom screening pile um, and water as necessary will prevent the dust from impacting the neighborhood. I'd also suggest that most dust is caused by trucks coming and going from the site. Uh, as the site plan indicates, and Andy will review with the board, uh, the applicant is proposing a gravel driveway that will keep the dust mitigation gone, down. That gravel driveway will connect to existing gravel and paved areas that lead back out to Tanis Street, which is away from the residential uh, area. Ultimately, the project meets the goals of the city master plan as well as the Air City Industrial Park Plan by creating a new business at this location, which will also create at least a couple of jobs uh, which will be filled by city residents. This type of operation is certainly in character with the other types of businesses along Tanis Street, along, along the Tanis Street corridor. There'll be no adverse traffic impacts associated with this business. And again, there'll be positive economic impacts in terms of taxes and job creation. We feel that the applicant has listened to the concerns of both the board members and the neighbors and has made every effort to alleviate those concerns. If the board were inclined to approve the special permit tonight, the applicant would be happy to agree to limit his hours from 7:30 a.m. till 6 o'clock at night. Uh, would also be agreeable to administrative review for compliance with the special permit one year after issuance of the permit. I also think it's important to point out to the board that this is a fairly small seasonal operation which will be shut down from sometime in November through sometime in March, depending upon the weather. When the business is in operation, the equipment will, will not be running from sunup to sundown, it'll be running intermittently. Uh, we're hoping that the board sees the merits in issuing the special permit for this application we're requesting approval tonight. And I'd just like to take a second to review the comments. So generally, the comments that we received back prior to the September public hearing were all generally favorable. The biggest concern at that time was that the, the, the loom screening pile was about 150 feet to the nearest residence. As I mentioned, we're now 450 feet to the nearest residence, so I think we have alleviated that concern to some degree. Uh, but generally, the comments from the board were positive. Uh, so we're, we're hoping the, the board agrees with us, issues a special permit tonight and at this point, I'll hand the, hand the presentation off to Andy so he can review the plans with the board.
Thank you, Consular.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Andy Pajasek. I work.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Andy Vajasic. I work with Dana Perkins, engineer for the project. Attorney Geary hit a lot of the points. Just to piggyback on what he was saying, there was some confusion to where we were in the world, so we included a second sheet that has a general aerial site of the Scannell Boil Works property. We had discussed at the last hearing, we're going to utilize, there's an existing series of gravel roads already on the property. And so our main point of entrance will be off of Tanner Street, and we will extend the series of gravel roads over to this portion of the site. And then the biggest change really was extending the general area of the site, which allowed us to relocate the material storage and screening area further away from Maple Street. As Attorney Geary stated, you know, in addition to being further away, there is an existing condominium building there, which will provide screening both visually and audibly. And in addition to that, the whole site will be fenced in. There'll be a chain link fence with screening provided as well. And as Attorney Geary stated, you know, in addition to the gravel roads on the Tanner Street property, we're proposing a stone construction entrance where the trucks will enter the site. And that's larger stone riprap. And what that does is knocks a lot of the dirt off the tires of the trucks. Just helps keep the streets clean and the site clean, and keeps the dust down as well. And certainly, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
I have a question.
Thank you. Excuse me?
I do have a question.
And who are you, sir?
I'm Bill Schaefer. I live right up by there.
Oh, okay. When the public hearing comes back, sir.
Did you watch through when we all went through?
Yeah, when we open the public hearing, you'll be open. I thought you were with the petitioner.
All right.
Any other comments or concerns, Counselor?
No. So, Mr. Chairman, that's it. We're happy to answer any questions of the board or the public.
I'm Blake Blackland, Newport Beach, California. Kind of a new waggler in Newport Beach.
Yes, sir. I was born and raised in LA, and I just moved down there.
Were you having technical difficulties? Thank you. Sorry, Counselor. Any comments or concerns? None being heard. I'd like to open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
I would like to ask a question, if that's possible.
Go ahead, sir. That was just on, if you don't mind. We just had a gentleman, if you could just state your name and address for the record. That'd be helpful.
My name is Joseph Del Grosso. I live at 1 Autumn Street. First of all, I'd like to go through a little history of what's been going on there, if the board would listen to me. Everything green was removed from that place. I know that they said that they took out homeless tents and stuff like that. But everything green was removed. And one thing that Attorney Geary feels to mention, as does the engineer, is that borders sil resin. The trucks actually traverse right next to sil resin. For those of you who don't know, sil resin was documented by the federal government, one of the worst chemical dump sites in the United States. 30,000 decaying drums were there in 1978. If you, I haven't even looked at the plot, the plot plan again. Where is the plot plan? May I see it?
All documents would be on the web, like what's been provided for public hearing.
If you look, you know, he keeps mentioning Tanner Street and this Paper Street, which is, it's on the thing. The only way that they can access that processing plant is through Dennis Scannell's parking lot or through Canada Street. We haven't heard once about how many trucks per day were going in there. We haven't heard that at all. I have numerous pictures, and, I mean, I don't know if you guys want to listen to this, but I'm just telling you.
It's a public hearing, sir. It's a public hearing.
Yeah.
Do you have pictures and evidentiary documents you want us to submit to the board?
There was removed real ties exposing contaminated dirt and creosol. They're piled up there. They started operations in total disregard to the city of Lowell. They were stopped. If there was so legal of what they could be doing, why would they stop doing what they were doing? It's the city's responsibility for protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the occupants. I mean, if you read, I'm sure you guys have all read this stuff, but as far as noise, making creation or maintenance of excessive, unnecessary, unnatural, and unusual loud noise, which is prolonged and unusual, is unnatural at this time. This is the city of Lowell. This is yours. I mean, I can play you two 40-second tapes from my house of this. They said there's no grinding of stones. I can play that for you. I can play the constant, you guys must have heard it someplace along the line, of beep, 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 beep. And they want to do that from 7:30 to 6 o'clock? I've lived there for 44 years. It's a nice neighborhood. You're doing something there that is entirely, you're going to deliver loom, sift loom, truck loom out, go by one of the dirtiest sites in the United States, and I know it's right next to it. You're not driving, but you can't tell me nothing's seeping out or none of that dust is coming up.
Exactly.
I mean, you, and you want to put something like that in there? I mean, you guys are supposed to be helping us. That's the neighborhood. I heard you with the other people. You're concerned about the neighbors. You're concerned about this. What does this do for my property value? What's this do for all my neighbors' property value? I mean, I just think that, you know, one of the things I'd like you to read, my wife isn't here, but in making creation or maintenance of unlawful noise effects, it is harmful, detrimental, public health, comfort, safety, welfare, and prosperity of citizens. My wife had a heart attack in July. Now, I'm not saying this thing started it, but I'd like you to prove me that it didn't. We've been, like I said, we've been there for 44 years. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood. It's part of Air City. A lot of famous people have lived there. Marty Mier, the former state representative, Eddie LaLasha. There's been a lot of people that live from that neighborhood. They'd all be rolling over now. Well, I don't know if Marty would. He lives at the beach. But I'm just saying, I mean, this is wrong. This is wrong. You guys are supposed to help us. Are they going to, do they, this is a very valuable piece of property, I understand. It's industrial zoned. I mean, they can make a bonanza there. They can bring in trucks from all over, cut their time down. But once have they said how many trucks are going to be delivered, the size of trucks? I mean, it's, there's, there's no, there's no right thing about this. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you for coming down. The gentleman on Zoom, I believe his first name was Bill?
Yes, hi there. How you doing?
If you could just state your name and address for the record, sir, it'd be appreciated.
Yep. My name is William Schaefer. I live at 1 Waldo Street, and what you're doing is directly beside my house. I'd like to ask Mr. Geary a question. When we did the walkthrough last time, the processing was going to be done, you said it was going to be moved closer up towards the Maple Street area, and now you're saying it's going to be pushed back down towards Tanner Street. I work over in MACOM, so I'm very familiar with the area. So I went over and I spoke to some of the people that are in the area, and the only way I see that they have clearance to leave and enter there would be right by the Scannell Works, as we mentioned earlier. But when I talked to some of the people there, they don't seem to ever know what's going on. I talked to people over at the metal shop, and they say they have no idea of anybody asking them permission to have trucks coming through there. So I'm just curious, is that actually the way they're going to be going through? Or as Joe just pointed out, is they're going to be coming down Canada Street?
If I understand your, Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I respond to this?
Certainly, Counselor. Thank you.
So if I understand your question correctly, Mr. Schaefer, you're asking if we are actually going to be accessing this property through the Tanner Street, 50 Tanner Street, where Scannell Boil Works is low iron and steel. Is that correct?
Correct. Exactly.
Okay. So yes, that is exactly where we are going to be accessing. Everybody within 300 feet of the area was given notice. I would suggest to you that those businesses along Tanner Street probably don't care. It's as industrial as the city gets. So I would suggest that maybe they're just not paying attention, but we most certainly are going to be accessing through the 50 Tanner Street area.
All right.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Well, it does. It answers that. But I'm still curious if a lot of that traffic is going to be going down Canada Street, because it is, and also it's probably 282 Lincoln Street project, which would put it right up near the bridge. So does that mean that the trucks would be going that far up?
No. We don't have any access to Lincoln Street or Maple Street. The lot does not abut that area. We will not access through Canada Street. There is a back gate through Canada Street. That was the original proposed access point for this project. But in listening to the concerns of the board and the public, we have made the decision that the neighbors are probably better served by moving this, any access points through the, through the middle of the land and out to Tanner Street, where any dust will be evaporated as we go out. And again, the riprap that we're proposing at the construction site, the paved and gravelled ways heading back out to Tanner Street should mitigate any of that. So there's no access through Canada Street at all. The access will be through 50 Tanner Street, the main entrance into this property.
The processing will be done further down. So when we did the walkthrough, there was already one of the processing trucks there that was going to be doing the grinding, and you said, yeah, it was, that said it was going to be moved forward, because Mike had asked why we were going to be bringing it closer towards the housing and making it even louder. And you said because it was a better access, a better use of the land, and it would be able to process more product, as I recall.
Right. So if you recall, when we were at the site visit, we walked back towards the area, which was behind the commercial condos on Maple Street.
Right. But that's approaching up towards, by my house, too.
Towards the middle of the lot, if you will.
Right.
Away from the residential, so Waldo Street, I'm not sure I have a good.
Waldo Street is definitely a walking towards. That's also a neighborhood. But then my house is up on a hill, and when Greenery Group came in, they took massive amounts of land out. They cleared all the trees away. There's nothing green down there. It's just ugly brown shit now, and it's awful. And I just, now, now all that noise completely comes right up to my house like I was putting my ear against the tree. So just like Joe was saying, everything green's been removed, and this is our concern, because it can be very loud. Now, if it's down towards the end of Tanner Street, that's a different story. But that wasn't the plan when you were discussing.
No, it's more towards the middle of the lot, just the area where we showed you when we were at the site, where 400, the loom pile is 450 feet from the closest residential structure. And I think you were the one that suggested, you know, would you guys be willing to do an administrative review after a year? And as I mentioned in my presentation, that's something we'd be happy to do. Again, it's a seasonal business, so it would take a year to get a feel for what's going on there?
Yep. You've got one big thing against you, is the fact that we've already had Greenery Group do this.
What was it? I'm sorry.
We've already had Greenery Group do this, you know, where they just went in and they started doing loom, and they did it right beside everyone's home. So it's kind of an uphill battle, because he fought the war and he lost.
Well, we have no affiliation, no relationship with Greenery Group whatsoever.
Sir, if we could stick to the petition at hand and not, if we could stick to the petition at hand, and what's informed.
I thought we were.
No, that's, no, that was not. Any other comments or concerns, sir? You can't come back. No. Great. You can forward that to DPD. That'd be helpful. Via email. Anyone else wishing to speak? You can take care of that at the end of the meeting, sir.
I also have video that I can send you.
Okay. If you can email that to DPD.
I did.
Oh, great. Part of the public record. Just email them now while you're sitting there. That'd be helpful. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, but I think that this revised plan goes a long way to helping limit any influence of dust moving towards the residences. So my first question is, the narrative that was generated for the application states the hours of operation as being 7:30 to 5:00 p.m. I think Attorney Geary, you mentioned that the hours of operation now 7:30 to 6:00 p.m. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Member McCarthy.
Okay. So that'll be changed, then, if we were to?
Yeah, that must have been an oversight on my part.
Okay. And then I'd like to discuss the site plan. A couple of weeks ago, when I was out visiting the site, there are three large concrete material storage bins located along the southern border currently. But the revised, the site plan that's provided tonight doesn't show those. It actually lists that space as a proposed gravelled contractor yard. So is the intention, then, that these existing three large concrete storage bins along the southern border, closest to Maple Street, are going to be removed?
Andy, correct me, or Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but yes, those are being removed, and they're being relocated to behind the Maple Street commercial condos.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And then I just have one final question on the site plan, and that is, the site plan shows the chain link and the access drive, if you will, that accesses from, I think it's Canada Street. Right now, I think there's some concrete barriers that are there, and it may be a gate. I think it's a gate. But is that access drive a secondary access drive that's utilized by some vehicles, but not the big vehicles? Or how does that access drive relate to the site?
There's a current landscaping company that rents space in that area and operates as of right, and accesses the property through that gate. Which is, so again, my client is New England Masonry and Landscape. He's a landscape business. He operates his landscape and masonry business from that site.
When I was there, Attorney Geary, the New England Masonry logo signage was on the vehicles that are operating currently on the site, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so is there a second landscaping company or just the one?
This is same company. He's expanding to this business.
Okay. So there's two separate businesses, same Okay, so there's two separate businesses, same company. Okay. Then, then the trucks that are accessing off of Tanner Street are larger dump trucks? Or why is it important for those to use the Tanner Street access?
The trucks that will be associated with this proposed business, that is, the loom screening and the taro storage, would be larger trucks coming in through Tanner Street. The, the trucks I imagine that currently use the Canada Street gate are smaller dump trucks that landscape type trucks. Does that make sense to you?
I guess what I was hoping you would say is trucks over five tons are accessing Tanner Street, trucks under five tons are accessing, so some kind of criteria that basically states the, the size of the vehicle that's using the residential street and the size of the vehicle that's using Tanner Street, something like that.
So let me ask my client. The reason I can't answer that question is because I don't know what the trucks, what is, what kind of trucks operate out of that gate for his landscape business. But Sebastian, are you on the call? You have to unmute yourself if you are. Sounds like you're there. So, so could you answer the question, Mr. McCarthy's question? Do you know the size of the trucks that access through the Canada Street gate?
Well, the trucks we have... Excuse me, if you could just state your name and address for the record, we appreciate that.
Yeah, my name is Sebastian De Silva and my address is 106 Virginia Avenue.
Thank you, sir. If you could follow up to the questions asked by Mr. McCarthy, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, the size of trucks are ten-wheelers. It's not more than that.
So Sebastian, are those ten-wheelers accessing for the loom screening business or the landscape business?
The, the, the loom, the loom business.
So, so those trucks are coming through Tanner Street, ten-wheelers. What size trucks are coming through Canada Street?
It's a one-ton trucks. Those are small trucks, 3500. Yeah.
Thank you.
No problem.
So if we could, Attorney Gary, make a condition that only one-ton vehicles will be accessing the, the Canada Street gate? Is that agreeable?
It is agreeable.
Perfect. And then the last one, I hope it's the last one. In the narrative that it states, processed to receive, proposed to receive, process and sell landscape and masonry material, including screened loom, stone, mulch, and other materials. So when you're processing stone, are we processing stone by crushing it? Is that the intent for this operation?
Sebastian, can you answer that question regarding...
We're not going to process the stone over there. We cannot crash the stone on the site.
So any stone that you are selling there will be stone that you bring in and sell wholesale?
Yes.
So maybe as a way of just clarifying this, if possible, to alleviate concerns of noise, that we can have a condition that stone processing, including crushing of stone, will not take place on the site?
That's agreeable.
Okay. All right, and I, I think that your other condition of having an administrative review one year after permit is a wonderful addition for us to basically just see how things are working out. And if there's anything that the neighbors feel needs to be improved, that we can address it or, or maybe change the special permit if it needs to be changed. But I think that's a great addition as a final condition. I think that a lot of steps have been taken to help move this to a more successful operation for the neighborhood. And with those following conditions, I'd like to be able to support this application. Thank you.
This is Nissika.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Attorney Gary indicated, I was present at the site review. And I understood the concerns of the residents. However, I believe that the business owner has made a number of concessions to make the very best of what the residents would call a bad situation. I don't see any reason why we can deny this petition. The moving of the storage corrals, the indication that there is no crushing of stone, which may have occurred previously. It is simply a loom screening business. It is now 450 feet away from the closest residence. And it is located in an industrial zone. This individual, this business, has a right to live there. And I will vote in favor of the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Sean? Strike that. You want me to?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you, Attorney Chairman. I just got a question, Peter, and I'm trying to get an understanding of, we need a special, we're looking for a special permit here. I'm looking under the industrial uses on this 12.9. Where are we, what are we looking at here? The applicant has just said he's not going to be processing stone, which wouldn't come under J. That wouldn't come under J anyways because we're talking about an outdoor facility, not an enclosed building. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what, what industrial use are we looking at for the special permit here?
Member Callahan, I don't have the zoning code in front of me, but it's, it's, it might be sub 12, one, sub P, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, yes, so Attorney Gary is correct. It's subsection P, I just found it as well. It's the manufacturer, processing assembly, or other industrial operations subject to Building and Health Department regulations.
Okay, yep, as he mentioned, dust, fumes, odor, smoke, vapor, effective, okay. All right, no, I was just, because I was looking through the list of industrial uses while everybody's talking, like trying to figure out where we, what do we need a special permit for in this? But I can see that now. That, that's followed a special permit under industrial, general industrial. That being said, I understand the concerns of the residents that are in the, in the area. The thing is that this project is contained, now it's contained solely in the general industrial process. They've scaled it back. It wasn't, it wasn't one point in, it appeared to be in both general industrial and light industrial. Looks like they've now scaled it back to the point where it's just simply in general industrial. Scaled it back to a point where the most, the farthest away residential area is 450 feet away. And all access, as long as all access, all access of vehicles, it appears it's just going to be going through Tanner Street, which is on the opposite side of where all the residential facilities are. I think, based on that, I think this, this particular situation does meet the, does meet the criteria for granting for a special permit. It is applicable to the City of Lowell's master plan. The effect, I understand there's some minor effect on the neighborhood character as far as the residents are concerned, but there's also an industrial portion to that neighborhood as well on the Tanner Street side and that where all this, where mainly all this is, is taking place. It appears that the applicant is taking precautions as far as the environment is concerned. I assume Attorney Gary, your client is still willing to agree to what he put in his narrative as far as, you know, maintaining, watering it down, maintaining, you know, as little dust as possible and whatnot. I presume that he's agreeable to that as well, correct?
That's correct, Member Callahan. He's agreeable to all of those proposals, conditions.
And days of operation, I think he put in his narrative, the days of operation on Monday through Saturday, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and they're still maintain, maintain those hours. As long as maintained in those hours, 7:30 to 6:00, the days of operation don't seem unreasonable. And if you're in agreement with the administrative review for one year and as well as the other conditions, I, I would, I would probably put the condition as far as vehicle access to be all vehicle access. For the loom screening business shall be through Tanner Street accessway only. I think that's, that should make sense, right?
As, as I think the client, the applicant stated, they'll have one-ton vehicles utilizing the Canada Street access that they currently have.
But there's two, there's two separate businesses between the landscaping and the loom screening business, correct, Attorney Gary?
That's correct. And that, that does make sense, Member Callahan. Because we're before you tonight for the, for this business, the loom screening and the taro storage. So the, there is an existing business, as I mentioned, that operates out of the Canada Street site. As my client indicated, those, those trucks that access that area are one-ton trucks. But we can certainly condition this approval that any trucks associated with the new business only access the site through Tanner Street.
Yeah, I mean, Dennis, what are your thoughts?
It's confusing the way we have this process in front of us because the applicant is the New England Masonry and then it's New England Masonry and Landscaping Company, Inc. So it's, might be two separate businesses, but I think it's under one name. And so that's my reason for separating the truck size because it does seem like it's one entity that's operating two different functions.
Yeah.
Sebastian, so there's no, no trucks larger than one ton accessing, for any reason, accessing your trucks that is accessing the Canada Street gate? Is that correct?
Yes.
Then we can agree to that, Member McCarthy.
Okay, so, so no vehicle, all vehicle, oh, no, what was it?
Associated with, with this, with my client's business. We can't control other, anybody else.
Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll work out, we'll work out that condition when we get to the, when we get to that. And again, you're going to agree that no stone processing operations will not occur on site, so...
Correct.
That, that seems to, that seems to be an alleviation of the, of part of the problems, some of the issues as well. So with those conditions, I think this is something, considering the fact it is, I think it does meet the special permit criteria. It is in the general industrial zone. And I think with those conditions, I could probably be in favor of this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would have to agree with the fellow board members. It does meet the criteria. I also think that it is obviously very important to ensure that the residents don't feel the full effect of what they fear the most. So I think the fact of limiting the size of the trucks, negating that, confirming that there is no processing of, of stone on site, which would impact the environment for the residents. And most importantly, the administrative review that's going to take place in one year. So, given the fact that this business meets the criteria, I would, I would support it. But I am mindful that, you know, some residents may not feel that, that it should be there. But again, it, it should have a positive impact overall from, from the city perspective. But I would love to ensure that this administrative review is done when, when this business is started. So other than that, I would support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Judge. Man?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would agree with my colleagues that, you know, I think the petition has made many compromises, many accommodations in favor of the, of the residents and the city. You know, I, I really feel that, you know, due to the fact that they're seeking a special permit in a zone that's built light industrial, I think this loom screening business, which is seasonal, I, I really, I really want to emphasize it's seasonal. It really fits in with kind of the, that zoning for that area. It's not a year-round business. Like my colleague said, I think the petition has made many concessions in favor of the neighbors and the city. You know, and I want to just let, let the neighbors know that, you know, you might not be happy with what's going in there now, but, you know, there's a process to this. If they're not following the rules and regulations, you know, in a year, when we do their administrative review, you know, the, the special permit could be in jeopardy if it is approved tonight. So I just want to, I just want to say that to the neighbors. And I really think that this, this business fits in with, with the character of the zoning for this particular plot in this neighborhood. So hopefully it, it works well for that area. And I really think, hopefully they're successful because we don't want an empty lot here, Mr. Chairman, you know. So overall, I think, I think it fits in with this, with this zoning area. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I have a, just a few questions and a couple of comments. So we've talked about the size of the trucks, tonnage, access, and the like. So Sebastian, if I may, how many trucks during this 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. seven, six day a week schedule do you anticipate for, for your loom business?
For the loom business, we have two trucks.
So that's the loom that's going to be, those are the trucks that are going to be bringing the loom in for the screening. What's your anticipation of traffic as far as your customer base?
Well, that's something, I, yeah, depending on the business, how the business is going, you know. I don't know how many trucks come for the day.
So you have two company trucks that are over one ton that are going to be transporting this in, or is it an outside vendor?
No, no, it's, we have two big trucks. We're going to bring the, the loom in. But they come from Tanner Street. It's not going to come from Canada Street.
So I think his point is, Mr. Chairman, it's hard for him to gauge the traffic. It's a new, new business. Hopefully things work out, but it's hard to tell.
Yeah, I'm just, I was just trying to get a pulse on how many of the 18-wheeler, five tons are going to be coming in?
I mean, there's only, there's only going to be one loom pile, so it, you know, it can't be that, that much going on.
Okay, all right, all right. The other concern I have is, and I understand it's a seasonal, it's a seasonal business, but my memory, if it serves me correctly, and the board members can jog my memory, a one-year administrative review is, is, is out of the ordinary, even for seasonal. I know a six-month isn't valued enough, but if we look in at a January calendar for operations and we go to an eight-month, we are right smack in the middle of the, the season of this business. So I would request an eight-month administrative review. That'll be able to give us some time, give the board and the public to put eyes on this, especially during the season.
That would be fine with the applicant. And makes a lot of sense, actually.
The other question I have, were there, were there any neighborhood meetings on the site other than? I know you had, you had the one in request, you know, conjunction with the board. Is anyone from Sebastian's office or the engineer's offices there?
There were no other site meetings or, or neighborhood meetings other than the site visit.
And just out of curiosity, what's the height of these loom piles, loom piles, if you will?
Andy or Sebastian? Andy or Sebastian, can you answer that?
Well, the pile would probably be around sixteen feet high, no more than that.
Did you say sixteen or sixty?
Sixteen, one-six.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, let's try to size my, my questions. Any other questions or concerns of the board? So Mr. Clark, we have a few motions. If you can present them to Counsel Gary and the petitioners.
Just want to clarify, you know, go over the conditions, Attorney Gary. We have, first condition is the hours of operation had to be limited from between seven thirty AM and six PM. Number two is we're going to have an eight-month administrative review. Number three, all vehicles in excess of one ton in weight shall access the property through the Tanner Street accessway. And number four is stone processing operations will not occur on site.
All are agreeable.
I, I do have one, one question as relates to the, the schedule. What, when you speak of seasonal, what's going to happen to the site off-season? Is it going to be dormant during the winter season? Is this, is this a true March to December operation?
It is, the, Sebastian, you can answer that, but I believe the answer is the, you know, once the ground freezes, you're going to just break the equipment if you try to do anything with the screening.
Okay, so to, to that point.
Is that correct, Sebastian?
Yes.
So, so roughly from, you know, depending on when it gets real cold till when it thaws again.
Okay, so as part of your landscaping business, do you do snow removal?
I do plow in condominium, but, you know.
I'd like to make a condition that there's no sto, no storage on this site during the winter months or off-season.
Is that's agreeable as well, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. So it will create additional erosion and soil issues as well. Any other comments, concerns, Mr. McCarthy?
I, I just would like to be more specific about the crushing of stone into gravel with that condition rather than process, because process could be stones brought on site and sold. Crushing is, I think, the issue, so crushing end of, stone end of, of, stone into gravel.
Because there'll be no grinding equipment on the site. If there is, there's, that's a clear violation of the, the permit.
That's right, so we, we can agree to that condition.
Any other comments, concerns related to the conditions? None being heard. May I have, may I have a motion, please?
Just to make sure you got, you got all those conditions right, Peter. Okay.
Thirty to six, eight-month administrative review. All vehicles in excess of one ton of weight shall access the property through Tanner Street. And stone crushing operation will not occur on site.
And no snow storage on site.
And no snow storage.
With that, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight for two eighty-two Lincoln Street for a special permit approval under Article twelve and under section, do we, do we have a variance as well, or off-street parking? No?
No other, no, just a special permit.
Okay, not sure why I had that.
Article twelve.
So just, just special permit approval under Article twelve to establish a loom screening operation at the subject property with the previously mentioned conditions.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Briere, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Tonight.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve the conditions.
The council, you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck in your site.
Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Peter, if you could provide your email address to the gentleman.
All right, thanks a lot.
Moving forward on the new business, we have a ZB twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine for variance, the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell. At six forty-seven, six seventy-nine Middlesex Street, section six point one. The Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell have applied to Lowell's zoning board of appeals to renovate and construct an addition of the existing Boys and Girls Club facility. The application requires site point review under section eleven point four for an addition that is greater than ten thousand square feet. The application also requires variance approval under six point one for relief from the off-street parking requirement and for any other relief required under the zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir, how are you?
I'm very good.
Welcome to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals.
My first time, I promise I won't talk about any crushing of anything. We don't crush kids. But.
I believe, sorry, if you, if you like, I believe when you're at the lectern, you can take your mask off.
Thank you.
Having a difficult time.
Easy for everybody to hear.
Having a difficult time hearing you. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, I'm Joe Hungler, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club. I live at one seventy-eight Loose Street in Lowell. And I just want to quickly talk about why we're doing this project. And then I'm going to let Rick Feldman, who's our owner's project manager, present. Our architect is on Zoom, if you have questions for him as well, Patrick Ty. So this, when I was hired eleven years ago, there was a direction to renovate the Boys and Girls Club. Because the building is, many of you have been in it, it's on its last legs, it's, it's given all it has to give. And as we've grown over the last ten years and used kind of every inch of available space, we've started serving many more kids, and we really started looking about the purpose. And our purpose wasn't just to fix the building, but our goal is to end generational poverty in Lowell. Make sure that our kids have a pathway to a better future, so that our kids, particularly teens, have a place where they can learn about what's possible for them, and they can access the same things that kids who have more resources get to access. For those who aren't aware, we serve kids ages eight to eighteen. We only charge thirty dollars a year for those services, so we're really focused on those who need us the most. And that led to the teens that are being a key part of this renovation, which is a big part of the addition. They want their own entrance, and younger kids choose whether they come to the Boys and Girls Club. Teenage, I mean, younger kids kind of go where your parents tell them to go. Teens have a lot more choice about where they go. And if they don't choose to come in, we can't get them to do all the career prep, all of the leadership programs and all of the resistance skills programs. And, you know, many of you are familiar with the club, I know. But I can also tell you that beyond the stories of, of alums that do well, we also have data to back up what we do. Our kids consistently do better, about ten percent better than kids across Lowell and across the state when it comes to getting A's and B's, when it comes to having a plan for post-high school, and when it comes to graduating on time. They also do better eating their fruits and vegetables. Sally does a great job cooking, we serve dinner for about two twenty-five a day. All these numbers are kind of pre-COVID, because we're really applying for post-COVID, what it'll look like. And, and then we, they also are much better with resistance skills when it comes to drugs and alcohol. And the one that, as we've been fundraising for this campaign, that, that always comes up with the doctors that we've been talking to is the teen pregnancy rate in Lowell is thirteen percent. For the teens who go to the club, it's less than one percent. So when you talk about ending poverty, it's a great start to not be trying to be a parent when you're still trying to graduate high school. So that's the purpose of what we're trying to do. We're trying to double the number of kids we serve and to really make an impact on our community in a positive way. So I'll let Rick kind of walk you through the, the details of the project, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. That's, that's enlightened information, and I'm, I'm glad that you took the time to share those statistics. Because everyone in the city has benefited from child to today. So some of those, you know, statistics were, were glaring, and I'm glad you continued to do what you've been doing down there for close to eighty years, year after year. Those, that's very alarming to me, what I just heard. But you clearly have defined the need to move from the early childhood to the secondary. And that's, that's my point, taking, taking that into consideration for our city youth, that's, that's yeoman's work. Sorry, sir, I just want to, I don't want to lose my train of thought.
I'll let you keep talking, that was very good.
No, no, you don't want to let me keep talking, please, put your name and address, thank you.
Rick Feldman, Feldman Development Partners, ten Knollcrest Drive in Andover, represented the club tonight. And this presentation this evening is following a presentation we had with the Conservation Board several weeks ago, where we got a negative determination of need. And then just recently, last week, approval for the planning board. We have a visual, if you can maybe assist me here, we had it animated. So am I, can you do this from your, from your area, get it on the screen? Just a brief overview of the project. That's it. So, so what do I do? Oh. Oh, they can't see on this screen, too? Oh. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So let me see if I can go back here for a second. Can I control this?
Is this what he's going?
That's right, okay. So let me go back. My apologies here.
No, no worries.
All right, this is just an overview of the project, won't take up much of your time tonight. But this is proposed rendering of the elevation along Mermack Street with addition of the teen center to the left, and a new entranceway in the middle, and a new theater on the right. Just an overview as the property sits on Mermack Street and along the canal. Just sort of a boxed elevation of the proposal. There's a new addition there. That's actually an area that's been deleted, this, in shaded areas, a new addition. In just summary, the building is going to be expanded to forty-eight, fifty-five thousand square feet. It's a requirement of forty-eight spaces. Tonight, we're asking for a variance to have only thirty-six spaces. And I'll demonstrate later on why that hardship is required for this new development. Again, there's just a space plan with a parking in front, Mermack Street on the bottom of the elevation here. Some interior layout, a new landscape plan that we have along the canal. Part of the hardship requirement is that we are losing access to the rear of the property as part of the National Park Service's proposed canal project, which of course we, you know, support tremendously. It's always going to enhance the area, but we can't have any access to the rear where we do have parking right now. That's again, one of the reasons we're asking for the hardship tonight. And I will go through this just generally as a larger-scale project. Interior, we've got some new openings down to meeting areas from the first and second floor. Again, elevations are rendering from Mermack Street. This is from the rear, from the canal, and from the proposed new walkway that the National Park Service is working on. And I will sort of fast-track this, we can always go back to this. As I mentioned before, as Joe mentioned, the project architect, Patrick Ty, is on Zoom. Also, I would like to add a successful alumnus of the Boys and Girls Club. And there's some interior shots of the teen center, going to be proposed. So tonight, the request for the variance is, you know, several things. You know, one, we've lost access to the back. We have gained access with the police substation, so we can have additional parking there. We're also obviously adding a significant landscaping component to the project, something right now is a very hardscape along Mermack Street. And we feel this is certainly significantly enhanced, the whole redevelopment of Mermack along with the recent courthouse project. But probably more important is the quirky nature of a Boys and Girls Club in the first place. Our patrons are not driving there. They're being dropped off and picked up by parents. They're walking, they're taking public transportation. Kids from the high school are walking. And actually, the access with the new canal projects is going to enhance that viability. We feel very confident that the required parking that we will have, which is thirty-six spaces, will certainly satisfy the parking requirements we have for any of our employees and staff. And then finally, just again, the kind of unique nature of a Boys and Girls Club. We've got a gym, we've got a meeting areas, we've got lunchrooms. It doesn't fit the traditional square footage requirements that a typical office or other use in the zoning would require. It's unique, we are certainly confident it doesn't really set a precedent among the zoning board's approval, but really justifies our request for tonight, you know, for the hardship and this variance request. That summarizes my proposal, mindful of your time. Again, I do have Patrick Ty for any questions architecturally on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, outlining the information. Do you have anything to say at this time, Mr. Ty?
Good evening, thanks, thanks for having us tonight. No, I think Richard did a great job presenting the project. And I'm, I'm available for questions, thanks.
Thank you very much, good to see you. That being said, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name's Sandra McTamar, President of Centerville Community Coalition. And I just can't say enough about the work and stuff they have done in Centerville with our kids. Honestly, I believe what they deserve is the whole lot of St. Louis school. If anybody's listening out there, we got to make that happen. What a better program that deserves something larger than even what they're asking for. And again, they have done so much, and I know through other sections of the city, through running national night out. Again, I have not heard a negative of anything in regards to them. They're remarkable, so I think this should be in their favor.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, that portion of public hearing is now closed. I'd like to open it up to the board, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, as you said, Mr. Chairman, that many of us are affiliated with the Boys and Girls Club in one way or the other. My three children went there, and one works there. So I, I hope that doesn't represent any biasness, but I, I would be in favor of this project. I do want to make one clarification on the gentleman that spoke. He kept saying Mermack Street, and it's Middlesex Street. So, only because I.
I got a little nervous, Mr. Hungler, I thought.
Yes, I, I have, I have looked at this project in detail, and I, I think it's a wonderful project. It will be a wonderful addition to the city. And with all the modernizations that's going on in that area, it would only add to it. So I would vote in favor of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, like, like Mr. Proko said, I think it's an amazing project. It totally makes sense, this addition, it's, it's all upgrades and renovations and making it, the boards will be all more modern. I, I just, I do want to share a quick story. Growing up, I attended there several times throughout my high school, middle school times. They, they always wanted to do it to me and my friends, you know, when, when we needed someone to hang out, someone to just, you know, kind of stay out of trouble. So I think what you said, Mr. Chairman, they're, they're really doing God's work. So any way that I could support it, you know, I think this is a, a great project, so wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Simply put, your work is invaluable. The impact you have on young lives is worth all the parking spaces you need. If you had no parking, I'd vote in favor of this. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
I'd have to compose myself first after that comment. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a couple of questions, but I, I echo my fellow board members' comments about the tremendous contribution this organization makes to the city in general and specifically the population that is here that's being served. You mentioned two hundred, I think, I think it was a statistic of two hundred and forty?
So, pre-COVID, right, right now, we serve about a hundred and fifty kids a day. Pre-COVID, we served about three hundred kids a day, about a hundred and twenty-five of those were teens. Thank you. We served about three hundred a day, about a hundred and twenty-five of those were teens, the rest were younger, you know, younger than high school. And the anticipation is that we'll double that with the new, with the new space. Part of that is the pool. Part of that is the pool that has been closed for longer than I've been around, in Lowell, not longer than I've been alive, is going to turn into a cafeteria so we can feed all the kids at the same time. The two twenty-five is about how many kids we feed on a typical day pre-COVID. That's where the two twenty-five came from.
Okay.
And that'll double to, you know, close to five hundred.
It's, it's an amazing, I, I was, I think we were, I was talking to my fellow board member, Georgia, at the last meeting about how I was looking forward to this coming up tonight because it's just such a huge step forward, something that is, is deserving, I think, of the population that's being served here and it's such a tremendous gift. It's such a tremendous addition for us to have. I do agree with Mark, I don't think we should say that we would give it to you even if you had no parking, but I'm just...
Well, our staff would agree with that as well.
I'll say it again.
We do appreciate all the support though. And, you know, we, we look up the street and we see a hundred eighty million dollar courthouse that's kind of designed to bring people to justice. We just want to spend ten percent of that to, to really provide our youth with a better future.
Absolutely right, couldn't have been said better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody for their kind words.
Thank, thank you, Sean.
Thank you through, Mr. Chairman. I certainly share all the, all the same sentiments as my fellow board members. I think this is an outstanding project. It's going to be very, it's going to be an absolute benefit to the city and to the youth of this, the youth of Lowell who utilize it constantly. And a couple of things that I'm just kind of curious about because I know, going through the comments from DPD with regards to the parking, we're here for a parking, parking variance. They, there's a mention of, like, first of all, there's portions of the area for the parking about Clemente Park and there's going to be some required screening there. Is that, is that being done through the, is that the landscaping portion? Or there's going to be any, are there any fences that are being planned or?
I think I could probably answer that best.
Okay.
I, I can speak to that. So there was this issue of screening and there's a, there's some safety concerns. So I think what we said in the planning meeting is we really wanted to study that so that we would screen with a fence, a transparent fence, but we didn't want to create a wall condition because there's some unsafe stuff going on in the park. So the way we left it is we were going to study it, look into it, provide a fence for security, but probably not a wall that would create like a physical obstruction where you couldn't see from one space into, into the other. I hope that answers the question.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Thai, appreciate that. So Peter, we don't need to condition, to just like, as an additional condition of like working with DPD on alleviating screening of the adjacent park? Is that, that's something that you could keep on?
Yeah, yeah, and I know that Francesca met with the Boys and Girls Club team, I think earlier this week or last week. So they're in communication about that specifically.
Okay, so it's something we don't need to condition then, right? Because that, that was something that was brought up in the, in the comments with regards to section six point one point eight. Additionally, I was looking through the site plans. I, I don't see the dimensions of the existing parking that's there. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, all existing parking spaces are going to be zoning compliant.
This is Patrick again. Yes, the existing isn't in the package, but the new proposed parking plan is in the package. So currently, there's twenty-three spaces at the front parking lot. And to, to make an effort to improve the parking situation, there's a, there's a building that the Boys and Girls Club owns that fronts Middlesex Street that the, the police up until recently used. And that, that building will be demolished and in its place will be an additional, ten more spaces. So we're try, we're trying to improve the situation by going from twenty-three spaces to thirty-three spaces. And that's how we're doing that. In the package, there's an enlarged parking plan that shows the dimensions of all the spaces, the driveways, the curb cuts and the turnarounds, that's, that's located, that's, that's included in the, in the package.
Okay, I miss, I guess I, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to digest here, so. And it's, again, it's an outstanding, outstanding plan. And I'm just, you know, blown away by the, by the whole thing. And I just want to make sure that we, we got everything in order there because DPD did bring it up in one of their comments with regards to the parking and make sure that as long as it's dimensionally compliant, we shouldn't have any issue with that, so. Other than that, I, yeah, I think this is going to be a great thing for the city and I wish you the absolute best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I wholeheartedly agree with, you know, the positive comments that the Boys and Girls Club has had a profound effect on generations and generations of young adults, children, alumni. If you've been part of that program and any effort, you get, you get back far more than you give. I've been very fortunate over the years to spend some time down there, Joe. You've done amazing work since your tenure. The fact that we're here, I believe this started, this chatter might have started in seventy-nine when I was there, maybe eighty-three in high school and then when I went back to help out as a volunteer. And to that point, the volunteer base that the Boys and Girls Club holds generationally in the private and public sector is just, is just a testament to what you and your staff do there. And there's, there's, the fact of the matter is, is, you know, we talk about revitalization, we talk about downtown, we talk about businesses and lofts and all these things. However, if we don't recognize the need for our children, we have no need for any other development in the city. And now taking it to the, to the level of the teenagers, that, that in itself is pioneer thinking. That's definitely you and your staff looking to another group of children, teenagers, they're still children as far as I'm concerned, that have a very big need. I'm excited about it. I'm very excited that Mr. Thai has come back to his roots and, and provided his services. He's a renowned architect. He's, he comes from great stock and, you know, he's putting his fingerprints on this simply because he has a big connection to the city like everyone else does. I wanted to make, make my, my position known that it certainly takes generations of do-gooders helping those in need. And, and that's, that's a great thing. That's what Lowell is all about. Any other comments or concerns? None being said, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB twenty twenty-one dash forty-nine for six forty-seven to six seventy-nine Middlesex Street for variance approval under section six point one for off-street parking to renovate and construct in addition to the existing facility.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Prokop?
Approve.
The gentlemen, you've been in as approved. I wish you the best of luck, the continued success over there.
Thank you very much for your time.
Take care, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Patrick. Moving forward on the new business, we have ZB twenty twenty-one dash fifty, variance Coaljack Development Corp., thirteen Irvine Street, forty-six Pine Hill Ave., section five point one, Coaljack Development Corp. has applied to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for site plan review, special permit and variance approval to develop the vacant site at thirteen Irvine Street, forty-six Pine Hill Avenue into two duplexes. The property is in the TMF zoning district and requires site plan review from the planning board under section eleven point four point two and special approval under article twelve to have four...
For the development of two duplex residential structures. Each duplex will comprise two residential units with the required parking. The plans that we had provided to the board members with the application calls for, the first floor will have a parking garage. It will have a utility room and then stairway to the first floor, which has a living room and a kitchen. And then one floor above that are the two bedrooms. There is an additional floor that we have marked as storage and we have amended the plans to show that it is storage. It will not contain any closets. The plan has a one-car parking garage with an additional space and a driveway for the other car that fulfills the required parking. And as you can see, the comments from the department were favorable in that the two other existing properties on Irving Street are of a similar nature. And this, this construction and development of this project, as far as neighborhood character, would blend in, in with the neighborhood. It's of particular interest that Irving Street, as, as Matt Hammer of Lamplex will, will point out, is, is a, is not a, a street that has been accepted by the city at the current time, but we believe that it has been serviced by the city and plowed by the city. And there are two other existing homes across the street on Irving Street. Part of the pavement on Irving Street encroaches on the lot line of this plan. And that's one unique feature of this in that we do, we do not plan on using that portion of the paved portion of Irving Street, that we will be providing a ver, a, an easement for that back to the city. And we will incorporate language in our condominium documents so that it cannot be obstructed or built upon. The, the prior site plan approval had a number of, and I hope, I hope I'm getting them all, a number of conditions, one of them being a landscape plan, a lighting plan to depict the snow storage on the site, to add windows to the third floor bedrooms, and to provide for, to point out in the plan where the easement will be provided for an adjacent property owner in the rear of the property whose property, whose driveway actually encroaches on ours, that we will be granting an easement on that property to that owner. It is our opinion that the variances that we requested, as staff has indicated in their conditions, are, are not demanding in nature and that they would in no way derogate from the intent of the zoning ordinance. And at the same time, the practical application, the development of a vacant lot of this size would be to put these number of units on there that fit well. There is a landscaping plan that we have that will add to, to the, the property and it'll be a quality place for people to live. At this time, I would like, it's Matt, if you want to go, go forward with the site plan and want to point out the landscaping that we have provided.
Thank you, Attorney Theodoro. For the record, Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering, ten George Street, Lowell. I'm going to go through the plan from the podium, which, there's an access drive which is an accepted street, which is Irving Street. It also, the parcel is bordered by Pine Hill Avenue. And is also a portion of the property is bordered by Gorman Street, which is a dead end currently. The Irving Street, which is going to be the primary access, comes up in grade and the lot slopes down in the rear from Irving Street to the rear of the property. The parcel is fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet. And we are proposing two duplex structures. Each unit for each of the duplexes will be serviced with an individual driveway and a garage. The, each of the buildings will have a rear porch with a stairway coming down to grade. And the, each building will be serviced with drainage. There's infiltration trenches along each of the driveways. And there's a subsurface infiltration system in the rear of the property. Each of the properties will be serviced with water, gas and sewer, with a sewer system which will connect over to a manhole over on Gorman, Gorman Street. As Attorney Theodoro pointed out, there's going to be two easements on the property. One is there's an existing driveway off of Gorman Street to the, to the property at sixty-one Gorman Street. So instead of eliminating that driveway, we're just going to provide a access easement for that driveway, for that parcel. And where Irving Street itself encroaches onto the property along the entire frontage, we're going to be providing a roadway maintenance easement for that existing pavement. And one of the reasons why the, the building's set back further than typically, the requirement is the maximum distance you can have a building set back from the frontage, is that we're not going to take benefit of that pavement that's on our street, which is part of Irving Street for the parking calculations and the setbacks. So we're going to respect that encroachment and we've pushed the, the buildings and the parking back slightly because of that. We've also, we'll be working with DPD on landscaping. We, we have some preliminary landscaping shown on the plan, which, which is shown as six shade trees and two ornamental trees. And that's been added to the plan since our meeting with the planning, the planning board. Additionally, the floor plans have been modified slightly for the third floor loft space. And we removed the closet space on the third, on the loft space and that third floor will only be used for storage and not able to be utilized for a bedroom. And I can take any questions from the board.
Thank you very much, appreciate that outline. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed, like to open up to the board, Sean.
Thank you through, Mr. Chairman. I am, I was a bit curious about the proposed driveway, the corner, well, it comes off of, well, not proposed driveway, but the existing driveway that's coming off of Gorman Street. So you're providing an easement to the current owner of sixty-one Gorman Street with regards to that property, right?
That, that's correct.
Okay, so is there any portion of, any like, is there going to be any screening of that to make sure that no one who has access to, I mean, that no one has access to that driveway with regards to Irving Street?
Because... We can work with the property owner and reach, obviously, we're going to reach out to the property owner and they may not even know about, about this. And just let them know that nothing, nothing is going to change and we can provide some screening over there if necessary.
Okay, well, Mr. Hammer?
If you notice on the plan, does everyone have a... If you notice on the plan, does everyone have a colored plan in front of them?
Yep.
If you'll notice, there's an existing tree line that's going to remain.
On the site plan? Oh, yeah, yeah, I see the edge of vegetation. Okay. Yep. So...
So that's going to provide some training and then some additional trees are going to be included here.
Oh, okay. All right, I don't see that on this site plan here, but I see the tree, the two trees that are now, that are now sitting there. So, okay. Well, as long as those are there, that's fine. I just don't want to, just don't want to see any issues come up with regards to later on down the line that you're taking, I mean, you're taking away their parking. It's already a tight squeeze, not only just on Gorman Street, but Irving Street too. I mean, that's a tight squeeze. I don't know if we could, I mean, just looking at it, I mean, I've gone by that area several times and it's really, I can see why it's not an accepted street because it is really, really tight, but I just want to make sure that, there's not going to be, you have the two parking, the two-park garage, you have the outside parking. Just want to make sure that there's not going to be any more parking in that area for anybody if, who's going...
And the existing streets that are in that area, the number of them are the same size. It's all a tight area.
Yeah. No, the two on the opposite end of Irving Street from this parcel, they don't even have any parking available over there.
You know, it's interesting, on Irving Street, across the street, there's almost, one of the houses across the street, I forgot which number it was, on Irving Street, has their own parking lot adjacent to the street.
Really? Oh, okay. Didn't, wasn't even aware of that. So, well, good for them, I guess. They're lucky with that, so. I mean, this is a good use of the property, actually, kind of unusual. I mean, I've gone by it several times and you don't even notice it. I mean, it's just a bunch of vegetation.
It's just all completely overgrown.
Yeah, completely overgrown vegetation that could use, you know, I could see that building, building up that area and this seems like to, a good use, a good use of the property and I wish the applicant the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is actually a really good use of this parcel and its property, as my colleague said and from the narration. It's just a blank lot with overgrown vegetation. So I think, you know, I think it meets the criteria for the variance in terms of hardship. It kind of overlaps two corner lots, you know, so I think this is a good use of this property and I wish the applicant the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Van Dennis.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, but I must say, in my time on the board, going through these neighborhoods, this is one of my favorites because it only gets better. It's so imaginative to see how these lots are getting reconfigured and taken advantage of and I must say, the imagination sometimes, you go by this lot and you say, how the heck is that going to work? And you look at the site plan and it's like, of course, it makes total sense. It doesn't look like there's as much land there when you go by as there is. It's deceiving. It really, really is. And I was looking at the grades thinking, wow, that's going to have retaining walls, it's going to be tricky, but you made the footprints of the properties nice and compact so that they really can take advantage of the different topography that's there and not have a huge site cost with retaining walls and impact that way. So I just wanted to speak first to the height situation that we have here. It looks like we have about a 10-foot elevation from the garage level to the first floor and I'm figuring probably eight-foot ceiling, so that's another, you know, first floor and second floor is another 18 feet. So we're talking 28 feet. We have a restriction of 35 feet. So it seems doable that that's measured to the midpoint of the sloping roof, I believe. So is that the intent that we're going to meet zoning for the height?
Yes. That's going to be, it's going to be 34 feet will be the height and that'll be the average grade from all four points around the building, which is your average grade plane calculation. That'll consist of that 34 feet.
All right. So that was one of the comments that we didn't have on any plan, a dimension giving what the height of the structure is. So maybe...
It's on the zoning chart.
No, of the plan submitted.
Oh, the architectural.
The architect, there's no dimension on the...
Yeah, they'll be limited to that 34 feet.
So maybe one of the conditions is that the structure will meet zoning or be less than 35 feet?
Yep.
Okay. Great. And then there's a number of conditions that the planning, I think the planning board maybe have had, especially the landscape plan. I was confused what the lighting plan is. What is the lighting? We don't typically get into lighting.
Yeah, it's, you can go through it. It's marked on the revised site plan.
I believe it's a component of site plan review, which is why it doesn't come to the zoning board, but I'm not positive about that.
On residential properties, we have lighting plans?
If, I forget if it's there over a certain amount of square feet or a certain amount of units, but anything that triggers site plan review is one of those conditions.
Because I'm not sure what your proposal is for exterior lighting on this other than egress doors. Yeah, okay.
Do you mind me to address the question? Is that a question?
Is that what the lighting plan would consist of, is just egress doors are being lit as required by zoning?
Yes. Yeah, so we're, you know, we're providing all downward-facing lighting. There'll be an entrance lighting over the front door and on the exit door to the porch.
Sure.
And then on the garages, there'll be a motion-sensitive downward-facing light as well, and there'll all be 40-watt lighting fixtures for those.
Okay. Are we proposing that we condition this in similar fashion to the planning board? Is that what your Attorney Theodore was starting to allude to when you were going through the conditions?
Well, we can, we can make the same conditions at the planning board, incorporate those conditions into the decision of the zoning board as well.
Okay. One confusing one I had was the windows being added to the third floor. There's no bedroom up there anymore and it's just storage.
No, it's, it's not the third, yeah, there is no bedroom up. It's the second floor.
I think you stated windows to third-floor bedroom, but maybe, okay, so it's the second floor.
It's the second floor.
Okay. All right. That makes sense then. All right. It does seem to make sense to provide those same conditions, I think, as far as our, since they're already there, it would just be confusing to pile on another set. Although I would like to add the condition about the height, that the building height be 35 feet or less to meet zoning. Okay. But other than that, I think that it's a, it's a great way to use that site and we need housing and it looks like they're going to be beautiful units. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great use of the property. I look very favorably upon this petition and will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. I think this will be a great addition to that neighborhood and a great use of the property. And thank you for the clarification on the lighting, which I wasn't sure about. I would approve this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, Counselor, you've heard the comments of the board will condition and the planning board's conditions, two other conditions here and, you know, as always, you know, I got to agree with Dennis, when you drive by these lots in the city and you see the petitions come forward and you try to visualize what's going there without the ability of a helicopter or a drone, and then you see it come pen to paper, it does give you great hope that there are still buildable lots in the city that can be conformed to homes for future residents. And as always, your due diligence and your preparation through your office and what Mr. Hammer has always greatly appreciated, I know by myself and I'm sure others. Any other comments or concerns?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I got one question. Attorney Theodore, with regards to the easement on 61, granting to 61 Gorman Street, was that addressed by the planning board at all? Did they put that as a condition?
Yeah, yes, they did.
Okay. I was just going to say, if they didn't do that, I'd like to have an additional condition.
And we included it in the revised site plan.
You did, okay. I just want to make sure that that's clear. So no need for us to condition that because it'll be incorporated with the...
It's listed on there as a proposed access and use easement.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So, thank you.
That being said, we can review the conditions.
So I have incorporate all conditions as established by the planning board, building height to be 35 feet or less. Okay. And, well, I'm sorry, was there a third one? Third condition? Is that it?
Nope, that's it.
Nope, that's it? Okay. All right.
In agreement with those, Counselor?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
That being said, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-50 for 13 Irving Street slash 46 Pine Hill Avenue for variance approval under section 5.1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum front yards setback and maximum building stories to develop an existing site to two duplex residential buildings with the conditions that the, all conditions as established by the planning board are incorporated as a condition to approval on this variance and the building height on each of the buildings not to be, is to be 35 feet or less.
May I have a second?
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the vice chairman. I have a roll call.
Chairman Perrin?
Approved with conditions.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Member Callahan?
Approved with conditions.
Member McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier?
Approved with conditions.
And Member Proko?
Approved with conditions.
Well, gentlemen, you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for your continued success in the city. Moving forward under new business, we have a variance by Linda Thye at 46 Wood Street, section 6.3. The applicant has requested continuance to November 22nd, 2021. Any comments, concerns? None being heard. May I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-48 for 46 Wood Street to continue the public hearing in this matter to November 22nd, 2021.
You have a second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Proko. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approved continuance to November 22nd, 2021.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approved continuance to November 22nd, 2021.
Member McCarthy?
Approved continuance to November 22nd, 2021.
Member Brier?
Approved continuance.
And Member Proko?
Approved continuance, November 22nd, 2021.
Your continuance has been approved. Moving forward under other business, minor modification request at 7476 Bolio Street. The applicant is seeking the removal of a condition placed on the property's special permit for use in 2004. The special permit allowed the property to be used as a three-family building if it remained owner-occupied. The applicant has recently purchased the building and is asking for the condition to be waived. We have a petitioner here this evening? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant, Daniel Di Camargo. Mr. Chairman, if I could just hand out some documents just for the board members?
Certainly, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. a special permit and actually in the narrative referred to it as a special permit and variance, but it was actually just a special permit to continue a use of a three-family structure that according to the records of the special permit had been used as a three-family going back to, and it said, the assessor's record said 1972. I'm not sure whether it could have even been before that, but at the very least to 1972. So we're now looking at a property that's approaching 50 years in use as a three-family. At that time, it was the SM 2 district in which three-family use was allowed. The board at that time approved of the grant of the special permit, however, they put a condition in there saying that it, as long as it remained owner-occupied. Now, we had a meeting with Ms. Signiano from Plan and Development and, you know, we discussed the fact that there's nothing in the ordinance that created any type of condition saying that, okay, you can have these multifamily uses provided it's owner-occupied. That's not what was, you know, required at the time. And today, it's in the TMF zone, which allows a special permit up to two, three-family by planning board and then other certain conditions that you can go up to a six-family. So we have a situation where the board back, you know, 16 years ago acknowledged that this is something that has been currently approaching 50 years. It's, so we're looking for the removal of this condition because of the fact, Mr. Di Camargo bought this property, resident of Lowell, owns two other properties, he has a two-family, I'm sorry, a three-family and four-family, and doing the same thing that he's doing here with this property. You know, in this particular property, decks, roof, new roof, siding, interior upgrade into current cold conditions and things of that sort. And so it's not anything that would, removing the condition isn't going to change anything as far as the neighborhood goes. And what I handed to you was a, you know, that printout showing Bolio Street. And if you're looking at Bolio, it comes off of, on Enelle Street, the school going down Bolio Street, and so it would be with your back from Victor Street going down towards West Sixth Street, the property is the second property on the right, which is, you were saying, it's a three-family. The house was, you know, on the corner is a four-family. Across the street, you have duplex, 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 two to four families, six family, three family, three family, down at the corner, four family duplex, then two single families, then duplex, triplex, duplex, triplex, and again, the four family. The second page showing that the house as it's currently set up, you know, it has the parking for off-street parking, stack parking, two layers on one side of the house, one layer on the other house on the other side. So you have the six parking spaces. So again, this condition has nothing to do with the use of the premises. It has nothing to do with the fact that this is something that's been in existence for close to 50, at least close to 50 years. It's very much in keeping with the neighborhood. It's allowed within the neighborhood. It was allowed back when it was SM 2. It's allowed now and no change is going to take place other than the fact that Mr. Di Camargo continues to be very proud of his work. He's a resident of the town, putting this kind of money into upgrading, so it improves the neighborhood. It helps the neighborhood. And certainly directives that have been coming out of, you know, Boston, you know, in terms of the issue of housing stock and providing housing, you know, the condition would, if enforced strictly, would actually require the reduction... enforced strictly, would actually require the reduction in a unit that's been in existence for fifty, fifty years, which doesn't make sense from the perspective of what would the purpose be? And again, getting back to the initial point of discussion, there's nothing in the zoning bylaws that create the identity of the occupant requiring them to be an owner. I mean, the inference would be that anyone that occupies a premises, unless they're an owner, is different. And, you know, a, a, someone that rents a property and occupies it as a rental, they're, they're a resident of the, of the city. They're, they're a member of the community. They're, they belong, you know, within the city. So we, we see no reason that there is no basis for it, and it is, certainly will be causing Mr. D. Camago issues relative to future funding and additional monies to put into it over and above what he's doing already.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that. Prior to discussion, I've been advised by GPD that this minor modification is informational only, so the public hearing will not be heard. But I have been presented with a letter from the Senobo Community Coalition Group with nineteen-six signatures in opposition to this and requesting it to remain a three-family. I'm also in receipt of two other letters from one-thirty-seven Enel Street as well as comments from the city of Lowell. So we'll move forward with the board. This time, I'd like to open up to the board. Sean?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, it's an unfortunate situation. I somewhat agree with you, Attorney Plunkett. I don't, quite frankly, I'm, I'm a little baffled. Maybe this is what happened back in two thousand four, but I, I, I'm still a little baffled on how they can condition something on it being owner-occupied. I don't think that's, maybe, I know, I know the zoning's bylaws have changed since then. I can't, I mean, I wasn't on the board fourteen years ago, so I'm not sure what the, the conditions the circumstances were back in two thousand and four when they, they did condition this or what was said. I understand that there's several members of the community who are present today, and we've gotten some opposition to this, and this is not a public, unfortunately not a public hearing. I, I mean, I certainly, I certainly don't want to, you know, not let the, let the public have their say, but we're here on a, I guess, a minor modification. I guess the only two, the only two issues before us are, is this a minor modification? And can we accept it as a minor modification? I'll listen to my fellow, other fellow board members, but unfortunately, it, I, I, I tend, I tend to agree. I think the law is, is pretty clear, and I tend to agree with Attorney Plunkett that this, this is a restricted, this is a restricted condition that, quite frankly, I don't even think it should have been, I don't think it was, I can't say whether it was legal or not in the first place, but it was very, it, it just didn't seem like something that really, that, that could have been, that should have been granted back then. Whether it should have or not, I don't know. But I'll just listen to my other fellow board members at, at this point right now and see what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, two thousand four is a while ago. I know that since I've been on the board, we've never used owner-occupied criteria to condition a property, at least that I can remember. I'm trying to understand the parking that exists because I'm reading the letters, and parking seems to be the biggest concern. So we have fifty-five feet of frontage. If you take maybe eighteen feet of that, to have driveways on either side, nine feet or roughly a foot and eight feet, that leaves you with, what, thirty, thirty? It's, it's over two parking spaces in front of the property, so you potentially have six parking spaces if you count street parking with four off-street parking spaces. That, what, is there, Attorney Plunkett?
Well, the, there's, I think, potentially that two, we're not even counting on the street in front of the, of the building. And, you know, in terms of parking, we're not adding any new units. This is the number of units that's been in existence for fifty years. So, you know, in terms of the question of parking, nothing's changing. The only thing that would change would be the identity of who's occupying it. But it's, it's, you've, on the left-hand side, I believe, there's the potential for stacking two stacks of two-pockets. So that'd be four on one side, and then on the right-hand side, stacking for two cars on the right-hand side. So the, there's sufficient parking, you know, for six cars stacked, two, two, two on both sides.
Wow.
Two, two stacks on one side, one stack on the other.
Plus an additional potential for on street.
Plus on, on street, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I understand the parking concern in the neighborhood, but I'm not sure that there's a change here that happens when you go from owner-occupied to not owner-occupied with the number of units staying the same as three.
Right.
And so if we're meeting off-street parking with six spaces, I'm, I'm not sure, even if this came before us today, if we would do any kind of condition like owner-occupied. I think...
It's no, we're in the ordinance.
Yeah. It's an unfortunate situation that we don't have the public weighing in on this in two thousand four to, to listen to what, what took place then that caused this condition to happen. But I think today, I can't support that condition remaining, so I'll listen to my colleagues, but that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Van.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Plunkett, I, I do see the merit in, in your narrative in terms of, you know, I, I've been on the board a little over ten years or so. I've, I've never had, I've never known to have a condition as a property to be owner-occupied for them, to use it as a rental space or a rental unit. I, I am very concerned, though, that we do have some neighborhood, we, we have butters and neighbors in the area that are, that are against this. And, you know, it's a valid reason why they're against this as, as well in terms of parking and, you know, congestion and all that. It does seem like you have, the property has a, a large kind of driveway and, you know, off-street parking, you know. You know, I, I think to me, Mr. Chairman, this is more than a minor modification. I think this is a modification of, of this special permit. Mr. Katrombus, what, what meets the, the, the barometer for a minor modification? Because, because to me, this, this should be almost another, kind of like another hearing, because I, I want to be fair to the applicant, but I also want to be fair to the neighbors. I, I see the validity of what Attorney Plunkett is saying in terms of, you know, a, a condition of owner-occupied to use it as a three-family. It does seem a bit, a bit of a, kind of an overreach or out of the jurisdiction of a, of a zoning board, in, in my opinion. So can you just tell me the, the criteria for a minor modification request?
So I can't speak to, like, the very specific legal criteria. This was not, you know, brought to the law department yet, but our development services department had, you know, is a land use lawyer by trade and worked in that area for a long time. So we generally default to, you know, talking with him and the other staff members, and then the opinion of the board on whether it's a minor modification. But it just generally, you can summarize it by saying, like, if it would change, if it would change the, if it would significantly alter the intent of, like, the permit that was issued. It just gets complicated in this area as Member Callahan suggested because we're unsure of the legal basis of the condition in the first place. But the board definitely has the option to rule that they don't think it's a minor modification and could require a second hearing if they so chose.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Katrombus, for that clarification. You know, I do, I do want to read a letter noted on September ninth, twenty-twenty-one, from the building department and from the fire department. They went through this, this unit, and then the, the new owner, the, the owner had to sign an affidavit saying that they will make unit one and two free-flowing, one unit within nine days of purchase, and only can rent as one unit. The unit three, second floor, can only be rented as a second unit, and it cannot be used as a storage, no bedroom or living space. And then... So I think, I think for me, Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I see the merits in terms of what the new owner is saying, that this condition of being owner-occupied to rent it out is, it's a bit of a stretch. But I, I do see what the neighborhoods, the, the, the letters that we got from, like, the, the neighborhood group, that they would be against it due to parking and congestion and all that. So I totally get that side, too. I, I really don't think this is a minor modification. I think this changes, changes the, the whole intent of this, of the special permit to use it from two to three. So it's, to me, it's not a minor modification. So those are just my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Van Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with, with Member Peck. I, I don't think it's a minor modification. And unfortunately, I've only been on this board for about a year. So I think uncharted waters for me. And if it's, if other members, another, you know, are struggling with this, it would make sense. And it is unfortunate that we cannot hear from the neighborhood because if we have a lot of signatures, we have a letter, it does impact them, and I think they should have a voice. I also think, I mean, it, it makes sense from a perspective of, you, you have a property, you want to develop it, you want to make it look nice, you want to, you know, improve the neighborhood. But if the neighbors are concerned, then there should be a valid hearing that the neighbors could have a voice. And I, I don't think that we should consider this as a minor modification so that there could be more information as to why this was done. Again, something that happened back in two thousand four. If there's no precedent for it, I would like to know more about that. That's my statement, Mr. Chairman. I, I would definitely not consider this a minor modification.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a real head-scratcher for me. I don't understand, well, I believe what I'm being asked to vote on is not a parking concern, but whether the condition that was placed on the property with respect to owner occupancy, whether that should remain. Now, I'm inclined to agree with Attorney Plunkett. I don't understand for the life of me how such a thing could have been imposed. I don't understand the legality of it or the logic of it. I simply don't. It seems more of a, a law question to me whether we can remove this, this condition. If I was forced to make a vote tonight, I would vote to remove the condition because I, I don't believe it's just. I don't understand how keeping this condition in place is of any benefit. It, the condition already exists. The, the cars that are there, the occupants of the, it, they're already there. It's not going to change. I don't know how the, there's any derogation of the neighborhood. I mean, what is it? I haven't heard it. The question before us isn't the byproduct of not enough parking. The question before us is the condition of owner occupancy. So I don't even know if we can delve into the parking part. The parking is the parking. It already exists. The question before us is whether this body can require this investor to be required to live in the property. I never heard of such a thing. Just think of the merit of that. What, what, what was it? What was going to be any different? Now, I understand that owner-occupied units provide for usually a better investment, where they keep a watchful eye on the neighborhood, and they're there to ensure the integrity of their property each and every day. Sure, there's an absolute benefit to, to that. But what's the legality of imposing such a thing? I don't see that there is one. And until the law department tells me that there is, I have to vote in favor of this petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you. As, you know, it, it's very concerning that there's a condition requiring a tenant and/or owner or property investor to remain in that property. What's the end date? I mean, a deed runs with the land. And, you know, I've been on this board for, for a little bit. I've never heard or seen this type of condition. I don't know how it came about. And I have to agree with Mr. Brier. I mean, the concerns of the neighborhood is just. Parking is always just. There's a tremendous neighborhood group over there that looks out for their section of the city, you know, day in and day out, year after year, with, you know, with due diligence. I'm su, I gotta be honest with you. I'm surprised this is, this has come and hasn't been challenged, to be quite frank. I think, in my opinion, I think, you know, if we're talking about the residents, it's established. We're talking about the, the number of bedrooms, it's established. We're talking about residency, it's established. Parking is established. I don't know anyone else, I've never met anybody else who's forced to stay in a home, that they purchase, rent, or lease, or own. Seems like it's an overreach to me. You know, and I also think to, to, to go into a conversation that, you know, it's a parking issue. Well, it wasn't a parking issue because it was passed. I think the concerns are converting this from a three to a six or to a nine. However, that will require a zoning approval. That will require the petitioner, the owner, the leasing, property manager, whomever's going to look to increase residential space, they'd have to come before this board. And quite frankly, I don't see that going, going anywhere. I, I, I do understand, you know, my colleagues' concerns that we're getting into something that may not be within our purview, but I think at that time in two thousand four, I think they delved into something that was over their purview. I don't think it, is it a minor modification? It, it's a legal issue as far as, as I look at this. I don't look at this as a zoning issue because there's, as the Counselor, as Counselor has clearly indicated several times tonight, there's nothing in the ordinance. I, I couldn't find it. There's nothing in the ordinance. We've never conditioned it. That's an, that's an extremely, in my opinion, that's an extremely adverse condition to place on anybody. To, I mean, I just moved. No one told me I couldn't move. So my, my thought would be that, you know, this, this should be removed, but it should also, I think it needs to be reroot by the legal department because... think it needs to be reroot by the legal department, because I think either way, either vote, up or down, I don't think it satisfies the true requirement of this. I think it also needs to be set in writing by the legal department that moving forward, this type of condition isn't placed on any zoning in the city at all. I mean, we, we're a public board. We have a public hearing, and we have a due diligence to maintain public zoning ordinances and laws. And to start separating, you know, these issues, to me, is just, it's not a road I want to cross. So as much as I'm not in favor of continuances, and I'm not in favor of not correcting this, I think that either way, if this isn't, if there's an illegal opinion written by the city of law at the request of this board, it leaves this petitioner open, good, bad, or indifferent, and it leaves the board subject to these same types of conditions, requests thereof, to be placed on other citizens. So my recommendation would be to refer this to legal, have a legal department give us their legal analysis, and I think, I think quite frankly, they're going to agree with you, Counselor. I think we're being asked to make a legal determination here on a zoning issue that, quite frankly, violated zoning in itself. And I think that, in order for that to be held, it should come from the authorizing agent, shouldn't come from the public board. That's my opinion. I mean, I look at the site, I've been at the site. Parking is clearly an issue. We have a long driveway, four-stack. We have a shorter driveway, two-stack. We're talking a couple parking spots out front. And we're all coming into parking season, right? The snow's going to fly, shovels are going to fly. We don't want to have unrest over parking. But I, and then fantasy to you and to the neighborhood, I don't think that a vote on this either way really settles this. So that's what I have to say. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, sir. If we're going to continue this matter and refer it to legal, Mr. Katrumbis, could you just look into the fact if this qualifies as a minor modification or just a modification? Because it changes the intent of the usage from two to three families. I think that's a big adjustment, so. And I want this to be on record, and I want the neighborhood, and I want people against and/or maybe in favor, I don't know, to have the opportunity to speak based on, you know, what they see as a concern or a positive or negative. So I just, I think this minor modification thing, to me, that's where I got hung up, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to see if this meets a qualification for like a whole new application, because it changes the intent of the actual permit and usage from two to three family units. So I just wanted to add that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I want to make certain it's to remain as a three, which it's been for 50 years. So we're not changing it from a two to the...
No, and, you know, you're coming here in good faith, and that's your intent, and that's your intent with the current client. Any other, I mean, if he sells it next week, the gentleman moves on, and he sells it, and there's going to be any increase in residential space that's going to have an effect on the property, they have to come in front of us. I wholeheartedly agree, but I can see this going. For this to be a minor modification, it doesn't satisfy your needs as the attorney for the petitioner. It doesn't satisfy the petitioner, and it certainly doesn't satisfy the board, because it puts us in an adverse precarious position. Again, it's, to me, it's a beholding adverse issue on an owner and on the city. It's kind of a, you know, it's a negative situation. And I think to protect the board and to protect the citizens and future petitioners, I think, in my opinion, and I'll yield to my colleagues who have tremendous experience, that I think it should come from legal. And that way there, you have the opportunity to present your case, and they have an answer to the case. And, you know, there may be some underlying factors out there that we're not aware of. But if I do look at this as a whole, I think this is so burdensome and adverse, it just, it staddles me, to be honest with you, that this type of condition was placed on a zoning petition. It does.
Dennis?
If I could just add to that, I think you're absolutely right that it has to go to legal, partly because also the city website itself lists this property as a three-family. So it's been taxed as a three-family, at least going back to 2004. And it currently has three separate electric services. It has a house meter, so it's probably been inspected many times by the city and been given occupancy permits as a three-family over and over and over. So for us to suddenly suggest that we could take that away because it's not owner-occupied is very strange, very, very strange. I think it has to go to legal. I think you're absolutely right.
Thank you, Dennis. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement, and I think maybe this should go to legal, if not for the fact that, I mean, again, this is an extremely unusual situation of this obscure, I mean, not obscure, it's like I said, this, everybody on the board has said this, first time we've ever seen this, that they put this condition of owner-occupancy, that it just seems, I don't know what to say from 2004, but it's extremely restrictive. And again, we can't go back in time and try to figure out what the board was thinking back then. Maybe getting an assessment from legal where they can give us an idea, maybe it was something that they could put on back when zoning, back in 2004, or there was something in the zoning code that said that they can condition owner-occupancy. I don't know. But if anything, it also sets us up to get an idea from legal. And again, my legal experience, Attorney Plunkett, too, as an attorney, I agree with you. I don't think there's anything legally that could put such a restriction on it, but I don't know. I think that's, again, we have to, we should hear from the legal department, we should hear from the city legal department on it, if anything, to ease the concerns of the citizens, ease the concern of the board and your client. And if this condition comes up again in other, I don't know, maybe they conditioned it, passports conditioned this in other instances, when they probably shouldn't have. So I would be more comfortable getting the opinion of legal on this to, just to easily ease the concerns of myself and as well as the rest of the board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Any other comments or concerns from the board?
So I moved a question to a legal review and opinion by the city law department for this minor modification at 7476 Bolio Street, to discuss the applicant having the condition waived for owner-occupancy. I have a motion, please.
Sir?
Yep. Someone?
Someone online?
Someone online?
There's no public hearing, so.
Yeah.
So we're going to move the question. We're going to recommend legal review of this, and then...
What would the meeting date be?
Well, actually, legal will opine. They'll review and opine, and then DPD will follow up through you. Legal will be in contact shortly. So then you can, I think this needs to be delved out amongst the attorneys in a legal matter and have a legal opinion written, so we have precedent one way or the other.
I mean, I know it's not a public opinion, a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, but the public, there are members of the public here present. Should we put this on in the future for another date, or just let it go back on the calendar?
Well, I think we should schedule it two meetings out. That'll give legal and Counselor Plunkett ample time to communicate back and forth. We will be submitting your documents tonight on the updated plans, and we'll also be submitting letters and notices from the neighborhood group.
Could I get a copy of those letters I hadn't received?
Most certainly, yes. I'll give them to Peter for public record, they're signed in, and he'll copy them out and send them to you. So if we look at two meetings out, that would be December...
13th.
December 13th.
It's our last meeting of the year, so.
Last meeting of the year, what a way to end. So December 13th, Counselor, is that ample time to have open conversation with law department? And I think that gives the law department plenty of time to review and give us their input.
Never, they're ready to discuss it, you know, just give me a call, and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your outline and your opinion in this matter.
All right. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Counselor.
We don't need to take a vote on that, right, Peter? Because it's a...
No, we just, we moved to, we moved the question to legal review and opinion and settle it on the December 13th meeting. Moving forward under other business. Extension request at 90 Lupine Road. The applicant is seeking a one-year extension in variances for minimum lot area, minimum frontage, and maximum FAR originally granted on October 17, 2019, and extended on November 9, 2020. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kenneth Lanier.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, no, no problem. You guys did a great job this evening. Looking to request just one more year extension. We've put together the team to do the construction for this single-family home. The boys obtaining financing, so we should hopefully be able to get started first thing in the spring. Permits to extend the water extension from the roges have been prepared, but with the November timeline for the closing of the roads, it's not something I'll be able to open up until the beginning of the spring. So we're asking for this extension for this one last time and have this hopefully wrapped up, and everybody happy and successful by the end of the summer next year.
Thank you very much. We appreciate and sincerely understand that. And we do appreciate you coming in and, you know, explaining this situation for us here. This is another extension request under other business. We will move to the board for questions or concerns. Van?
Mr. Chairman, I think I don't really have any concerns. I totally get it, why you need, you know, the extension. It's been a rough year or so for a lot of people, so, you know, with supply and staffing people and personnel, I'm sure, resources, it's all very limited. So I think, to me, this request for the extension makes total sense. So, Mr. Lanier, I wish you the best of luck, sir. I have no issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have any major issues with it, but, Mr. Lanier, I got to ask, I mean, there were conditions applied with regards to an updated site plan for the driveway dimensions and lot sizes. Is that been taken care of?
I provided that to DPD with a revision date of 8/26/2019.
Okay.
But it seemed to me from the comments I received via email from, it almost looks like Joe Cady's letter was just kind of reiterated from that point. So I'm not sure if he was actually looking at the updated revised plan.
Okay.
But if the DPD doesn't have that, I'll just resubmit that before the end of the year.
Yeah, I forget to...
Because I looked up the plan, it addresses all the parking dimensions, setbacks to property line.
Okay.
All those items are provided.
I'm actually looking it up right now. I think it's on here. Yeah. Okay. Just double-check, I guess. It looks like, it looks like I think we have it, but if you want to just double-check with DPD?
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Just make sure.
Absolutely.
Yep. Other than that, I don't see any other issues. I just want to make sure the conditions are in alignment, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis?
I agree. I don't really have any issues with moving forward with the extension, hoping that this is the...
This is it. This is it. We've done our due diligence, but this year was just...
It's true.
It was so expensive.
It's true.
And the board couldn't afford it. So we're moving on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark, Judge.
No issues with the extension.
Thank you. Mr. Lanier, you know, as you can see, it's been a terrible year. Clearly, it hasn't boded well for the building industry, and, you know, we're excited to get this project moving. I know you'll move forward in good faith. I'm in agreeance with this extension. I think it's suitable under these conditions. With that being said, I have a motion.
Do you, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for an extension request on 90 Lupine Road, variances approval under ZBA 2019-34 to extend the variance approval for one year?
May I have a second?
A second motion?
Second by Mr. McCarthy, Member O'Call, please. Chairman Perrin?
Approve the extension.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve the extension.
Member Callahan?
Approve extension for one year.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the extension for one year.
Member Brier?
Prove extension.
Member Proko?
Prove the extensions for one year.
So you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck, and hopefully this upcoming building season is more appeasing.
I feel it's going to be a much better one, absolutely. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a great night.
Have a great night. Thanks for coming in, thanks for your patience. Moving forward under other business, we have two items. We have election of zoning board appeals officers. Anyone have any comments or concerns? None being heard.
Do you, Mr. Chairman, are we electing officers tonight?
That's what it says, election of zoning board of appeals officers, yeah.
I think I'd like to see if we could do that next meeting. Just, this kind of caught me by surprise. I didn't realize it was on the agenda. Is it possible to have a... Part of it is that we don't really have a schedule for when we're electing officers, and so it kind of just...
Oh, is that, I'm sorry. You wouldn't have a schedule for what? Commissions?
Look, I don't want to make a big deal out of this, but I kind of, I was talking to Van, I think, last meeting, that we should put it on the agenda to have it for a future meeting, maybe the end of the year meeting, rather than to suddenly have it on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, was the purpose of it being on tonight's agenda, Peter? Is there something from DPD? You just threw it on there, running out of meeting time?
Not to the best of my knowledge. I think we were just kind of getting stuff in order at the end of the year, so I don't think there's a particular...
Yeah, I mean, I think we've always done it in December, because we just approved the calendar, the meeting calendar.
Yeah.
And you have, are you requesting information on commission dates? Is that...
No, I just want to make sure that we all have enough thought put into the election of...
Yeah, no, that's fine. We can move to December 13th. Is that okay with the board?
Sure.
Okay, can we move that to December 13th? We also have minutes of approval for October 25, 2021. Anyone have any reviews, concerns, edits, deletions, additions? None being heard, a motion for approval?
Do you, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 25, 2021?
May I have a second?
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a roll call, please? Chairman Perrin?
Approve minutes for approval for October 25, 2021.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Approve minutes for October 25, 2021.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the meeting minutes for October 25, 2021.
Member Brier? Member Proko?
Approve the minutes for October 25, 2021.
Minutes are approved and accepted. Any other comments, concerns by any board members? None being heard. May I have a motion for adjournment?
Do you, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to adjourn?
May I have a second?
A second.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.